All right, good evening. I will call this meeting to order for Wasika Public Schools School Board. Tonight is our regular meeting. It is Thursday, September 21st, 2023, 5:30 PM. And we are in the central building, second floor conference room. And we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on. Can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda? I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
A second.
First and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Move on to recognition of visitors. Welcome everyone from Mr. Hanson's class. I hope you can hear us okay out there. Those of you that came in late, before you leave, make sure you get a signature from one of the board members up here so you can get your extra five points. So, does anyone wish to speak during the open forum period? And Caitlin, do we receive any emails? No. All right. Moving on then to payment of claims. Director Bowers, would you like to make a motion?
I have reviewed the claims for the month of August and recommend action of payment for the claims. Accounts payable in the amount of $965,036.11. August dental for $21,482.17. And payroll in the amount of $894,406.92.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for tonight's consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we approve tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. All right, continuing then with our information items and the superintendent report from Mr. Hudson.
Hey, good evening. It has been an excellent start to the school year. It was getting into the third week of school here into September. If you can believe it's already the 21st of September here, coming through here with that. So, students and staff are settling into the school year. We get into those first few weeks of learning routines and learning what expectations look like from their new teachers and how things are going. And we're just having a positive feel as we head back to school. As I walk through the buildings today, there's just a lot of smiles and excitement and we're just kind of settling in to what this school year looks like. Of course, the fall comes with a lot of exciting events. So, we have, you know, our Marching Classic coming up on Saturday, which is an exciting event for our entire community as well as homecoming and the things that are happening at their high school. The elementary schools are working through all of their fall activities as well as we were working through that today. As far as report for strategic plan today, if you recall earlier in the summer, we did talk about what the new strategic plan would lead us to through a vision card. And so, I'm putting this up here for you now just to kind of look at some of the modifications that was made based on your feedback in the past. And so, I would point to the ranges, for example, minimally acceptable in students reporting feeling safe, 61% to 70%, as opposed to, if you recall last time, we had the less than and greater than in there. And this is much more clear. So, we'll be focusing on students feeling safe and secure through some surveys this school year. Of course, attendance and credit accrual will be tracking and reading at grade level for all of our students per our goals that we will learn through our assessments. The DAC Committee here coming up in a couple of weeks will get a deep dive into what our assessments look like. From a staff perspective, a desired daily experience focusing on feeling supported, valued, safe and secure, and feeling heard, looking at that through our retention data and some staff surveys items that we'll be looking at later in the school year, as well as our 30 days feedback loops and all of professional development. So, we're feeling good. Those baselines on several of our those items, the reading well, the providing high-quality professional development, attendance, those are based on current numbers. There are some of those that we're going to have to gather some baseline this year and kind of see how close we really were. Caitlin, if you go to the next page, talk about what it looks like for families. Families engaged with my child's teachers, school staff, we're collecting some baseline data now in terms of what does conference attendance look like? What do event attendance look like? Drop off, pickup, and trying to determine, do we have families that are feeling engaged? If you recall, our conversation from earlier this summer was, you know, I have a high school student, does engagement mean I have to attend every conference? Does that mean I'm logging on to Infinite Campus? Does that look like? So, we're customizing that this school year somewhat. Starting here in early October, we'll ask folks to be taking exit surveys as they, just a quick two question, did you get what you need and did you feel welcomed when you come to our offices? To make sure people are getting what they need when they come to our buildings. And of course, we've talked about the real world experiences. Safety and security is really important. So, we think about our district measures, our facilities are safe and secure, and we're prepared for emergency situations. Will be some things we'll be looking at, and we've got some internal audit opportunities with IEA and the School Safety Technical Center that we got some information last year, and we made some adjustments and working through there from that regard with that and communicating as well. So, kind of put some meets to what we talked about a couple of months ago, and I wanted to share that with you now. We'll start collecting that information now here as we start the school year, as we meet our goals for 2023-24 with a strategic plan. So, I'm feeling really good about where we're heading, and I'm looking forward to seeing what the staff can help support our students to accomplish this school year. That's all I had for tonight.
So, when you say baseline, is that essentially the minimally acceptable? Is that kind of where you would put that?
Correct. Yeah. Because at this point, we, with many of these things that might be new.
Right.
We haven't really intervened with anything new. So, baseline minimally acceptable, that's where they would be kind of middle of the road. Which way are we going?
Yep.
From there, right? You know?
Can you email that to us?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll link it in the board folder.
Okay.
That way, that'll work. That'll be good.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Moving on then to our reports from Mr. Mullin.
Hello, good evening. So, in your board packet, there was a preliminary enrollment as we're looking here in September. Of course, we always say view these early numbers grain of salt. And actually, I looked today and it was different. I wanted to honor what was in the board packet. But, so these are going to be moving around until we hit that October 1st, which is kind of when we really are going to look at that number. So, next meeting, we'll have probably a more in-depth discussion. Just a reminder, we did budget at $17,000 flat. So, you can see we're a little above, or 1,700, sorry. That'd be a lot.
We need to talk.
1,700 as a flat number. So, anything above that is obviously positive. However, another caution, numbers in the fall do drop as we get to the end of the year, and that's what really matters. So, we'll talk about that as the year goes on, but as of now, we do have our kind of fingers on the pulse there and trying to make sure we're not far off from what we thought. But, main focus tonight will be the preliminary levy. So, presentation up on the board for your attention. And you can go to the next page. So, right now, the levy has been determined using a variety of factors. It's 40 pages long. If you've never seen the document, it's a great read if you want to bore yourself. But, all those things lead into the number that ultimately ends up going out to our taxpayers. But, we only control a small portion of that, and that's kind of important to understand. So, whether there's changes in market values, so the, you know, the county assessor does his work, and that individually, everybody's properties go up and down, you know, in total, all that works out outside of our control. The class rates are set by the state, also outside of our control. Obviously, enrollment, we are affected by it, but we, you know, we can't really control that as well. And then, other changes in how the state divvies up things between aid and levy and their equalization factors, as they call that. All that is decided outside of us. And then, of course, if the voters have approved any additional dollars, in our case, you know, other than some debt, we don't have that here. So, those are all factors that go into this. We'll move on to the next page.
And the calculation is done by the state?
Yes. Calculations done by the state as well. Yes. So, with that, we did get our preliminary results. Of course, these are updating every day, which I think I'll get to in a second why that's important, is we're not asking for a certain dollar amount tonight. We're asking for you to approve the maximum. And what that allows is not only for us to make changes if we see fit, which at this point I don't anticipate that, but also allows the state to kind of get their ducks in a row because some of the stuff that changed even from this report, because once again, I looked this morning and the numbers are slightly different. Every day, they're tweaking some formula so that gives them time. So, then when it, you know, the county does pull the data finally in early October, then it's, you know, where it needs to be. So, that's why we set maximum. And if you do maximum now, you can always go back later and do less. But, if you do less at this meeting, you can't go above it. So, even if our enrollment jumped and we would be eligible for more, we couldn't do it. So, that's why maximum is important right now. And I'd say 90, probably 95% of all districts in the state do maximum. So, just, that's what we're seeking tonight. But, with the report that was dated the 12th of September, we were looking at about 4% increase in levy dollars. And I'll get to that, why that makes sense, that wording in a second. But, as you can see, the numbers there. And then, for a total of about that 5.3 million. If we go to the next page now. As we look at the general fund, the increase here is slightly higher because we had some decreases in the community service fund. But, just looking at the general fund, unfortunately, because of our property values going up, we are seeing more dollars which are needing to be, come from the levy, but we're not seeing more dollars as the district. So, the aid levy shift is going away from aid into levy. So, the total dollars we're going to get combined is staying about the same, but more is being asked of our taxpayers as the property values are increasing. So, that's kind of the mechanism there, and that's pretty much the driver of that bottom point there. That $150,000 is due to that shift away from aid versus levy. Some of the other ones are just some of the factors that we have. You know, LTFM is based on kind of projects you have and what's going on there and some other. And if the levy is kind of a three-year living document, so your first year, you do an estimate, the next year, they see what you actually did, and they either adjust you up and down. So, one thing we did have was a large adjustment with some of our unemployment. So, we had estimated one number, but with coming out of COVID and all the other factors, you know, the actual reality was a lot higher. So, we are seeing that catch up now. So, that was one of the increases as well.
What's the local optional revenue?
That's, that's just basically the, is it 700? Blinking on the number, but the...
721.
721 per pupil is what that's based on. But, once they calculate that number, then they do that, like I said, an equalization factor where some, you know, a district that has less property value or more poverty level, you know, base type things, they might give you more aid. Or if they think, you know, the taxpayers could handle it, maybe that's the wrong term, but then they will shift it more to levy. So, that's what it is. So, our overall local optional revenue between aid and levy isn't changing. That's just, they're shifting more to the levy as our property values are increasing.
And that shift is a result of those formulas, right?
Right.
Not any choice, it's...
Right. Yeah. So, the assessor has to be held accountable for what they put property values at to a tune of what places are actually selling for. So, if a house was assessed at $200,000 but it's selling for $250,000, you know, they look at that sales data, then they're going to go to that assessor and be like, you need to value these properties more because you're not holding true to what the actual market is. So, and that's a state requirement. So, our sales ratio on the current document was about 86%, which they're saying houses are selling or being assessed 86% of what they're selling at. And the state really wants that to be more like 95%. So, when you look at your property valuation statement, that's why you're seeing these huge jumps. Most, most people are anyways. I can't speak to everyone because they're trying to catch up to that ratio.
Could I ask a question? What I see recently, you have the property taxes are very high in Wasika, but I'm seeing the houses that are assessed high, they are selling for less. Maybe would the state come back to assessor also and ask him to put the taxes down?
Yes, they might. If that sales ratio, I believe, is also the other way, I haven't seen that. But, if, let's say it was 110%, then I think they would come back. But, one of the problems is this is like a two-year trailing. So, they're looking at 2022 sales right now for this report. So, we won't get that, you know, if they do drop, we wouldn't see that affect our levy until, you know, 2025, 2026. So...
Thank you.
No problem. We can go to the next slide now. Like I said, community ed was a decrease right now, and that is actually a positive. So, where we're seeing the shift go the wrong way for the general fund and the community ed with the new legislation, they're actually taking some of it that was all levy before, and they're giving us aid. So, the overall dollars that are coming to our community education fund isn't decreasing. It's just the state's picking up more of the tab. So, that's a positive there. And then, debt service, you know, hardly even mentioned it, but it's just based on what our debt we have. So, a slight increase there. And I think, yeah, just last slide here, just for some history, looking back about seven years at what the levy's done. The large increase from payable 18, you can see we were trying to add some new elements there, the OPEV and the lease levy, and LTFM was really coming in. But, since then, most of the time, we've asked for the same things on the levy. It's just, you know, kind of the play on, you know, enrollment would go into that and some other factors, and we can certainly dig into that more, but just to give you that background.
Do we still, we don't use a lease levy anymore?
We lease levy for just a slight $30,000 for our arena.
Right.
So, that's what we use for the arena.
Yeah. And Tink Larson, we have a smaller one.
Sure.
Right. Okay. That just wasn't in your, it wasn't in these, that's not part of these slides or...
It doesn't include in the slides, no.
It wasn't an increase, so I didn't know that.
Gotcha. Okay. But, it's still, it's still part of all this.
Right. Yep.
Right, right. And part of the, and part of the swing the last few years, I would say we'd love that to be consistently low, right? And without having to go negative one year, positive the next year. COVID was a big piece of that those last few years because of the services we were providing, particularly in community services for some of that school age care and some disability services there. And unemployment, what happened was the state stopped billing for unemployment when they stopped paying, when they started, you know, when they, when they were increasing that during COVID, but then they decided to catch up and now bill everybody for the unemployment piece. That's probably why their estimate was, that's why that unemployment increase happened there. To note, this is our regular unemployment services that we can levy for. The new legislation that says our seasonal employees are eligible for unemployment during the summertime, that we just have to pick up out of our general fund tab, that we are, it's in legislation, we cannot levy for that. So, that will never be added to the levy. So, this is just our regular, basically separation of employment, unemployment, not our seasonal folks who are off in the summer. Good.
Do you see us now, the further we, the further we get away from these COVID years, do you see us, because we keep going like back and forth the last few years, like, and kind of some bigger swings, not huge swings, but there's swings. Like, do you see us evening out at some point or...
I would love to see us evening out. I think there's a couple of places, a couple of things that play into fact. I mean, as Matt said, our home assessed value will play a role in that as that hopefully calms and continues to start to stabilize. That'll help us. LTFM and facility decisions will, will impact this. And so, if we're able to stabilize kind of our facility funding, whether or not, whatever the number is, as long as it's stable, that'll help. If you recall, two years ago, we had an asbestos project we were talking about, should we do it, should we not? Which, again, we can, I don't know if there are any big projects for this one coming up, but that's something we talked about between now and December. That's something that's kind of, we haven't spent the money yet for it, so should we keep that off the levy? So, I think that's part of it. So, yeah, we do want to even out as best we can. But, all of these are exactly based on, because we don't have any voter-approved dollar value, it's just based on the state minimum, is what we have of all of ours. So, we're just responding to the changes in our, in our environment.
Other questions or comments?
And on our website, I believe there's a link to get to the county assessor and to see some of, some of these, your own property tax value. And if you don't, obviously, you can always call our office or Matt's office and we'll help for that because obviously, it won't be a 4% increase for everyone. If, if your property value happened to go down, you may see a decrease in this particular area, whereas someone's value might shoot a shot way up, they might see a higher increase based on that. So, of course, it is, this is the summary, this is the general, the average for the dollar value of the total, but individually, that will impact everyone differently. So, as you're digging into that, we certainly help people as they're navigating that process as well.
And then, one thing that I just wanted to add to that, a lot of people get scared by that 4% increase. When they think a 4% increase, it's not on their total tax amount, it's only on the levy portion.
Correct. So, it would not be your, the bond that we voted on?
Right.
And it would not be your county or city tax.
So, if you had a $4,000 tax bill, your levy amount might be $590 or $600. So, it's only a 4% increase on that 600, not on that 4,000.
Yep.
Which I think most of us understand, but some people don't.
Yeah.
Good distinction. So, yeah, this is only a 4% increase of what we levied for last year.
Correct. Yeah.
All right. No other questions? Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
All right, moving on then to committee and board member reports. And Adita, would you like to start us off?
Yes, we had a policy meeting and we review, how many? A lot of policies. And we, we will have some that we will approve the review, and some of them that we just approve the reading of revised policy. We have some questions and some comments, and we will just work on it. And then, we had negotiations, and I will let you guys to talk about it.
I don't think we want to talk about it yet. I'm kidding. All right, thank you. Dave?
Well, guess what? I watched another MSBA webinar today. I'll try to keep this brief. It was entitled, "Where Are We Going and What Will We Find When We Get There?" And I just wrote down a couple of things here. It was all about a survey that was done. Here's a couple of things I thought you might be interested in. Overall quality of education in Minnesota. Now, I think this survey was done at the state fair. Does that sound right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, overall quality of education in Minnesota, 9% say it's excellent, 66% say it's good, 21% say it's fair, and 4% say it's poor. Are schools adequately funded? 44% of the respondents said yes, 53% said no, and 3% were unsure. When they were asked the question, "Would you support a property tax increase to better fund schools?", this one kind of surprised me. 69% of the respondents said yes, 26% said no, 5% were unsure. And this last one, I think, is kind of interesting too. Overall, in Minnesota, 2/3 of the people who took this survey said that taxes are high, but that they get a, but yet they feel that they get good value for the taxes they pay. So, that's kind of an interesting comment, I guess.
Yep.
We pay a lot, but we get a lot for it, what they were saying.
All right. Well, thank you for sitting through yet another webinar on our behalf. Grant?
We had a policy committee, and we kind of talked about some of the new school year things, changes in personnel, or sorry, a personnel committee, not policy. So, we covered some of those things. We had a finance committee meeting and really talked a lot about the levy and tried to dig into some of that, even though more data is still coming in. But, tried to deep dive more of what he presented shortly, quickly.
Okay, thank you. Colin, lots of stuff going on at the high school, I think. Yeah.
There is. So, we have this week, or this upcoming week, homecoming, which is, student council is just getting ready, preparing for that. And then, there is the Blue Jay Breakfast, which is Sunday, October 1st, from 8:00 AM to noon. And then, with it being like the first couple of weeks of school, the clubs are starting up, and just after-school activities have had more meetings, like just kickoff things. And then, the tackle cancer fundraiser was very successful. And then, sports teams are also having great seasons. Girl soccer is undefeated.
All right.
And I believe it was mentioned already, the Wasika Classic is performing this weekend. So, come out and see that performance. It'll be fun with the parade in the earlier and our exhibition performance in the evening.
All right. Thank you. Hope you guys don't get rained out.
Yeah. Pray for good weather.
Yes. Awesome. Thank you, Colin. Alyssa?
Finance meeting was last week, Thursday, and we pretty much, between Matt and Grant, everybody, we've kind of covered that. And then, the insurance and safety meeting was earlier this week. The majority of that meeting was spent on health insurance options and the plans. It sounds like they're going to be adding, mostly adding another plan. I think that was what we ended up deciding. So, there's going to be another health insurance option for them to choose from.
Okay. That's about it? Thank you. Charlie?
Well, I've been busy. I was doing an arena meeting here last week, you know, they talked about sheet, ICE is going on October 4th in the arena, so, and they're still looking for Zamboni drivers. They always, they always need some of them, you know? And so, they did a bunch of work on the Zamboni this year, about $5,000 worth of updates on that to keep that running. A little bit on signage, but everything else, everything else looks good at the arena, everything, you know, in great shape, things are coming along good. But, again, the building is 25 years old, and so, there are some updates that they're still contemplating, so, okay? On Monday this week, we had negotiations, the initial negotiation with the clerical group. So, we found out what their issues are and what they want to fix. Tuesday, I was at a policy meeting, Grant kind of covered that, right? Yeah.
Adita did.
Adita did, yeah, okay. So, them show up, them show up later in our agenda, so we did that. We had safety insurance on the 19th, and Alyssa kind of covered that. So, one of the things Colin Green talked a little bit about happening in place, we have a management plan for workplace accidents and injury reduction. So, there's, there's some plans out here to, you know, to keep everybody safe, and so that's, that's written up, so. And yesterday, we had negotiations with local seventy, the custodian people, so we're, so we're working on that. And today, we had negotiations with Wasika Education Association. So, kind of ironing out all the differences. They're all two-year contracts coming up this year, so, so we'll kind of work our way through that with Superintendent Hudson and our finance director there, so, okay? So, other than that, that's all we got.
Thank you very much. Darren?
Facilities, I think we took a tour around WIS a few weeks ago, looked at the operations there, condition in the school, talked to just about pretty much how they take care of it, what goes on there. Got a little bit into the needs of our custodial staff throughout too. So, and then, policy, you know, we got those listed on here later on, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, I think mine have been covered. I just wanted to add with negotiations that these are, we've met with four groups and they've all been super positive meetings so far, which is the norm, I think, for our district and our, and our groups. And I look forward to our future meetings, which I'd love to see have you wrapped up in a month, but it won't. Anyway, so, continuing on then to recognitions and positive board feedback. Darren, you want to start off on that one?
Sure. Didn't make it to the last football game, but it looks like they did pretty good. I think the one before that, that was even pretty nice as well, so. Yeah, I hope they have a good year, keep it going.
Thank you. Charlie?
Yeah, well, you know, like I said, we got the marching classic coming here on Saturday, and then, of course, the kids are excited about, about homecoming coming up again, and so I've been to three football games already. The first one at Stuartville, that was, that was a tough game, but they, the boys played really, really hard and did a good job, even though we lost. And then turned around and went Saint Peter, won forty-two to nothing. And then last week, last week, we, we played, I can't remember, but anyhow, we, we won, we won twenty-eight, huh?
Marshall.
Marshall, yes, yes, we played Marshall twenty-eight to nothing, so.
Can't forget that, Charlie, Marshall.
Couple shutouts, couple shutouts coming out, so the boys are, the guys are playing really well, so we're hoping, we're hoping they keep it up, keeping it up, so.
P backs off of that, there's, I think it's senior night this Friday night at the football game for the cheerleaders and the football players, so that'll be fun to go to. Community at the gymnastics program, they're kind of revamping that, you'll see that on the different social posts, they've got that going. Brianna Workie is the new team gymnastics coach, and it seems like she's doing a really good job and really enjoying it. The girls are really liking it too. And then again, hitting on volleyball, they're having a great season too, been to most of those games, the away ones I've been streaming. They're playing really well with their new coach, so it's going well. Great. Colin, do you have anything to share?
Just mostly those like anticipation of homecoming in the next two weeks. And yeah, we're just excited for things that are beginning.
All right, thank you. Grant?
I wanted to also note, related to homecoming, there's a lot of stuff that gets planned, and I think a lot of work that happens behind the scenes from a lot of the staff, so thank you to all the people who put in extra effort, and student council and things that have, that really make that memorable for all the students. And like a couple have mentioned, the Wasika Classic is this weekend, so please, community should come out, knock on wood for the weather, but even if it's raining, it still happens. I think lightning or other things may be the only thing, but it still happens, so come out and watch it. A lot of those band competitions and the ones that I've been to are very positive experiences, you know, we have all of our rivals in the various sports, but it seems like when you get to those band competitions, there's still, everybody's competing, they want to go together, but you look at all the interactions between the bands, and there's a lot of positivity, and it's just a really good experience for the students and to go watch as well, so come out to the classic, you won't be disappointed.
All right, thank you.
Quick story, ran into Devin Lawrence, I think it was the weekend after they went, the band went to Eden Prairie and Eastview, and got a chance to talk to him a little bit out behind the high school, and I said, "I understand you, we got second place, both places," and he said, "Yes." And he's, I said, "That's pretty good, right?" And he goes, "Yes, it is." And I said, "Well, who got first place?" And he said, "The same school got first place, both places, Grand Rapids." I said, "Just by chance, who got third place?" He said, "Marshall." And I said, "Well, that's a victory right there, isn't it?" And he just got a big grin on his face. And I got to go to a girl's soccer game, they are currently eight and one and one. They won that game three to one over Marshall, and Addie scored a goal, and I got to see Addie's daughter play defense, so enjoyed that.
I really hope no one from Marshall is watching this meeting tonight.
It's all positive.
I'm just kidding. Adita?
Just want to say thank you to staff and, you know, administration and our, everybody who helped the kids start this school year and everything looks and goes smoothly, and thank you for everyone to be there for our children.
And I just wanted to, the first couple days of the school year, I had a chance to volunteer at the PTO Book Fair at WIS, which was fun. I haven't been, I haven't volunteered for a book fair for several years, and it was a great way for me to catch some staff as they walked through the media center, and, and it was fun to see how excited kids were for, for school to start, and also for a book fair, they all were, it's cute when kids are excited to read. But yeah, it was, it was a fun couple days for me, and I appreciate that we still offer these opportunities in our buildings, and I encourage anyone to visit the next book fair, either at WIS or Hartley, and yeah. Okay, so we move on then to some action items. Charlie, you ready? You ready? Keep moving? No, kidding. All right. Can I get a motion to approve item A? I'm sorry, can I get a motion for item A?
A motion for item A.
Second.
We have a first and a second for approval, right? Yeah, so. Any discussion? This is just continuing a contract from previous years, right?
Correct.
All right, hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item B?
I make a motion to approve service agreement with Adara Home Health EMC for two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Should say twenty-four, yeah.
I'll second that. First and a second, any discussion?
I just say, these next several items are just for those supplemental services that districts that, you know, are not of a substantial enough size to hire a full-time individual to meet these needs, we contract with partners to do those, provide those services. The next four items are all fitting that category.
And that's all just based on what a?
Student need.
Student need, yep.
We have students that need those services right now, and, and we may or may not throughout the course of the year, but we have that agreement with that organization to do that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item C?
I'll make a motion to approve the service agreement with South Central Human Relations for summer of two thousand twenty-three. Second.
First and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item D?
I'll make a motion to approve the service agreement with South Central Human Relations Center for the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Second.
First and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item E?
I'll make a motion to approve the service agreement with Southern Plains Education Co-op for the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Second.
First and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item F?
Make a motion to approve disposal of updated social studies materials.
I'll second that.
First and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item G?
I will make a motion to approve certifying the maximum payable two thousand twenty-four levy.
Second.
First and a second, any discussion?
I just want to call attention to, we are required to post, we are having our truth in taxation meeting on Thursday, December twenty-first at six PM here in the central building.
Thank you, I meant to like point that out when you had your presentation earlier, but yeah, thank you. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Item H, we are acknowledging transportation rates for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. The district is currently in the second year of a three-year contract with our transportation providers, with rates to be determined each year of the contract. The rates for twenty-three, twenty-four have been established and are included in the updated contract.
And the reason for that, just for the board's and everyone's knowledge, is because we typically do a two-year contract with the volatility that was happening in the market of the transportation market the last few years. The increase that we were proposed to receive last year was quite high. We were able to agree to a three-year agreement to lower that initial year increase, and then TBD our rates for the next few years, and we saw what happened. We have a long history with our bus providers of what that state aid increase is, that this year's four percent, that's what we've matched our increase in our transportation rates, and so that's what you'll see indicated in the, in the contract updated for this year. So same contract, rates updated. What will not be in the contract is we've had some significant conversations with our bus companies about communication and about supporting families and what they know where, where students are, and if they have a delay, how are students getting communicated? So they are working on currently some communication chain plans, as well as some app, some technology opportunities to put on buses to be able to track those, that for our students heading into this winter, before the weather hits. So that was something that we were able to have them support that increase in service that, without increasing the contract any further. They recognized that was an issue, so I appreciate that.
All right, thank you for that explanation. Moving on, can I get a motion for item I?
I make a motion to approve reviewed policy five oh nine, five thirteen, five twenty-four, and five thirty-four.
Second.
First and a second, any discussion? All right, hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item J?
Motion to approve revised policies. Second.
First and a second, any discussion?
This would be for policy four eighteen, our drug-free workplace, and five oh six, a student discipline, from last time. The drug-free workplace, the major changes, just acknowledging cannabis throughout, that it still remains illegal and you can't have it in school. And the student discipline policy with the updates to the legislation on, on recess and suspension, which doesn't impact our work any, but there's significant, significant language we had to change, so that's why that took two readings.
Pretty much everything that was state.
Correct, exactly right, yep.
Very good.
Yeah, this was our second and final reading of these revised policies. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. And then item K, we're acknowledging, this is the first reading of revised policies, five fourteen, which is bullying, and five sixteen, student medication. So this is the first reading, and we will have our second reading at our October meeting.
And would you pull up five fourteen for us, please, Caitlin? Because one thing that we would like the board to look at for, before we have our second reading, there is a new law, which, yeah, scroll up to that malicious and sadistic language, right there, okay, right there, right under item D, second paragraph, malicious and sadistic conduct. You'll see that language referenced now three times in here, and that's based on a new point of legislation that has, that has been enacted. The committee had some conversation around whether or not that, the intent of that was already covered in other places throughout the policy. We, we landed on, we should include the language in the new law pending all of your input, and then discussion over the next, over the next couple weeks here before I have the final reading. And policy committee members, or anything else you wanted to add on that? Okay, so we put it in, we aired on the side of putting the new language in, and of course, we can, we'll have our first reading for a reason, to get all the feedback on that.
Could you add that to the, to your weekly update, just to remind the board?
Sure.
What part you would like us to review a little more closely, so?
Very good.
Thank you.
And then for five sixteen, the changes there is adding language around the opioid antagonists that we have to now have per legislation, the Naxalone, no, the Laxone, that we have to have. Rather than create a new policy, we added the language on that, that opioid antagonist to our current student medication policy, so there's some new language in there around that, but nothing with, in terms of changing the intent or distribution. And for the board's knowledge, as well as the, the public's knowledge, I mean, we follow the law, we have those opioid antagonists in our buildings, they are locked and secured in our, with our, with our nursing staff, our health office staff, and so there's not a, not a risk to, to that being inappropriately used, no.
Thank you for giving some extra information about those revised policies, so. All right, well, that brings us to the end of our action items. Upcoming items and reminders, for all of you students out there, make note, on October second, there is no school, so Teacher Professional Day, so if there is still listening out there, I don't know. Our next work session is Thursday, October fifth. Our next regular meeting is Thursday, October twenty-sixth. Make note that that is a week later than our usual meeting due to MEA week, the week before. And then MEA is October eighteenth to the twentieth for K six, and October nineteenth to twentieth for seven twelve. And that is all. All right, I will make a motion to adjourn. Can I get a second? First and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.